Good morning. Welcome to Brookings County Commission Meeting. It's Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. We start the meeting if you please stand with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And motion in a second. Any additions, corrections, or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item number four on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on a commission agenda for an item not listed. There's a five-minute time limit per person. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during this agenda item. Any requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting date. I believe we had anybody sign in, so we move on to consent agenda items, which includes the minutes, travel and education requests, personnel action notices, cellular authorizations, and human services report. Do I have motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any questions or anything? Hearing none, call a roll.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number six on the agenda is routine business, which is, item A is approval of the claims. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any comments? Additions or corrections? Hearing none, call a roll.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B on the agenda is department head reports. We start with Highway Department. Brian?
Morning.
Morning, Brian.
I'm gonna start with the White Water and Sewer Project. I attended the progress meeting at four o'clock on June 24th, and plans changed obviously from that progress meeting to an update yesterday. They were gonna pave Monday and Tuesday this week, but with the rain, that got delayed. So they are planning on paving Wednesday and Thursday of this week, and that'll be in the intersections of Fifth and Hooker and Main and Hooker, which would open up our County Road 25 hopefully by this weekend pending any other delays. There is gonna be some sidewalk work and some additional temporary delays following the paving, but the roadway would be open during that, it sounds like. So that's the update with White. On the 25th, I attended the Samara Avenue pre-construction meeting here in, at the court, or at the government center here, and we're looking at construction starting on July 7th. I guess that might be up in there yet. We're getting some other verifications on when that's going to officially close, but that is, was the intent of the contractor is to start on July 7th on Phase 1. So there'll be a detour map made available. We can post it on our website. I'm sure the city of Volga will be posting on their website to inform the citizens of how to get around when that time comes. That'll be made available and try to keep everybody on that detour. I know, I think that's the city's concern is making sure the vehicles stay on those detours, so. The Aurora concrete blowout. We had concrete blowout on the 21st of June. Luckily enough, Timmins had an opening in their schedule. That afternoon of, on that Saturday, the Highway Department was out and temporarily patched that back in with some gravel to get the road back open, and then that following Monday, we removed the gravel and put in some millings because of the rain we had gotten over the weekend. But then on the 23rd, 21st, also Timmins come out and cut out the concrete. We provided the flaggers. We decided that with the predicted rain that we would wait. The removal of the southbound lane happened on the 26th of June and, or the 25th of June, sorry, and then the 26th on Friday, the southbound lane was poured, and traffic was, control was reset on Monday, and removals were done, and the northbound lane was poured as of yesterday. So with any luck, pending on our compression tests of the concrete, that that would be open by the 4th. So that's the intent there. I think it went pretty good. I didn't, I didn't hear any accident reports from Dave, so what we did out there, the county did all the traffic control and switching the lanes around and that, but Timmins did the work of pouring the concrete back in.
Did that a water wash out, Brian?
No, the, from what my understanding is, is, you know, the interstate experienced the same thing as the subbase has moisture in it. You know, looking at roadway attempts of an excess of 100 degrees when it's hot like that, that water basically just starts boiling, and it's gotta have a place to go, and that place is up. And we were lucky on that instance where, you know, we were experiencing 25 miles an hour. You know, that was in a 25 mile an hour zone compared to where on the interstate you're doing 80. So we got very lucky. And then we were also very lucky to get Timmins in so quick, so I do appreciate them getting at that and helping us out there because I didn't want that to be happening during harvest. So.
Any issues with the high water in the two brid, new bridge site?
I'm getting there. I'm getting there. Getting to the storm cleanup. So storm cleanup Saturday, we had a few trees down the rural Volga and Bruce areas. Worked with, with Dave on that. Got around our guys and, and got some trees pulled off the road and, and cleaned up that. And then finally, Larry, the box culvert here that you had mentioned, 08F3 south of Aurora. I got a text message from a neighbor there. It is underwater. They're letting that concrete cure out before they did any backfill, but now that complete structure is not completely submerged, but it is underwater. So the water will have to reside before they can get to backfilling that. And lastly here, on June 18th, they poured the deck pour on our other project over between Aurora and Elkton. So on June 18th, they got that poured. They were working on doing some backfilling. Obviously, they have to wait until the concrete gets strength, but I think they're a little better, higher water situation over there. They don't have near the water that that box culvert is experiencing, but they do have all their equipment and everything out of there. Where down there, there was some equipment in the water, but wasn't completely submerged. But once the weather dries up, I would expect that we can get those true structures completed and mark them off the list. So that's kind of been the last couple of weeks of what the Highway Department's been up to. Is there any questions?
Was it just that heavy of water flow, or was the box culvert? I mean, first thing that runs through my head is why didn't we build this thing big enough to handle that water? Or was it standing water?
It's handling it. It's just that, that area down there, you know, getting closer and closer to the Sioux just gets a lot of water.
I wonder.
It gets, you know, and then once the, the backfill gets done, Doug, you know, that'll obviously help and direct the water through the culvert. Now it's just going around and, yeah. So, no, the, the structure's definitely solid. It's just unfortunate that we got that much rain and all that water's funneled from over by Elkton through there, so.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Brian.
Yep.
Dave from the Sheriff's Office?
Good morning.
Good morning, Dave.
I handed out our, our latest stats and everything. I won't regurgitate anything on that. Just wanna touch base back Friday with the accident over in Volga. Big shout out from, from us, and I know others that were on site, Volga Fire Department, all of our rural fire departments in Brookings County. They're, when they come out to do something, they are 100%. The time that it took to get traffic diverted and cones up and traffic moving again was phenomenal. There's construction companies that do traffic, post or diversions or, or movement or anything that could come to Brookings County and learn from our volunteer fire departments, that's for sure. Another shout out, South Dakota Soybean Processors. They were the first ones on the scene there checking everything out, according to the, some of the witnesses that were there. Once everything got hand, got controlled, they were out there with a truck and a pallet of floor dry and throwing those bags of floor dry out like bales as they were driving along the spill and everything. Everything taken care of there. No injuries, nobody else got hurt besides one of the drivers, a little bit of bumps and bruises, but everything was handled there. We just, Sheriff's Office, we just wanted to make sure that, had a good shout out to the Volga and everybody that helped out on that one there. The storm damage also, like Brian said. County residents, as soon as they see lights out on a road, they're out there, hey, what can I do? Can I get my tractor? Here's a chainsaw. And had a 75-year-old guy with a battery chainsaw out helping us up on North 471, and that was the highlight of his day. But farmers out with their tractors and, and pushing stuff off, helping Brian and getting the roads open, and so that all there was left to do was clean up. It was very much appreciated. But that's all I have unless there's any questions.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Dave.
Laurie from Finance Department?
Good morning.
Good morning, Laurie.
Okay, so Department of Legislative Audit, as I said, is in the building, working on the 2024 audits. So if you have any questions, concerns, anything you want them to look at in particular, either stop down and let them know or let me know. We did sign our letter of engagement this morning. I do have a little bit of an update on the county liens as far as what we have collected. Maybe you wanna show this, Stace? I don't know if you want me to maybe, what I will start doing is when I do the finance report every month, I can put in their numbers of what is collected. But so far since, this is since April 1st, we have collected on 216 liens for $62,411. So the letters have been a very interesting response. A lot of them had no idea that they owed any money, and I'm talking, these are old, old ones. So it's been kind of, I don't know that I would say fun, but it's, there's been some angry people, but there's been some that were really glad that they got the letter. So these are the totals that have been collected. With liens, she's had to move, when we first got this system, I remember it being set up, and we've had so many personnel changes since then and moving the work from office to office to try to get a good fit, that we didn't really, I don't think, utilize the program that we had and the things we could do. So we're trying to get that organized so we can send out letters and know these are all court-appointed attorney, these are care poor, and get our numbers kind of more easily available. So she's been working on that, but that's what we've collected so far. Otherwise, I guess we'll talk mobile homes later. I've got a few resolutions on those. The $2 transaction fee went into effect today for motor vehicles. That is a state fee to help with the cost of updates for their new system. It's $2 on every transaction, so if you come in with four renewals, each one's gonna be $2. A title transfer is, if you're gonna do a title transfer and get plates, it's gonna be four bucks. It's a state fee. We, we have no control of that one. So that's about it.
Any questions?
Laurie, on the liens that you talked about, you said there was people that were surprised that they owe that. How, what, how old are those liens and how do people not know about that?
I'm not sure the ones that, I don't think they were like ancient old, but I don't know how old she's been working on, but, yeah, older ones.
Okay. So the, the people are not notified on a timely basis that they owe this money?
I think that over the years, I mean, I can come up with probably five names of people that have worked on these over the years, and I think that, you know, things get lost in translation and, and a lot of offices. Sometimes you do the work that needs to get done, and you don't have that extra time to, to delve into things or know that reports should be ran or anything because it's just been passed and passed, you know. So we're trying to get a more solid grasp on the whole process.
Okay.
In general, are yous, are they starting with the oldest ones first, newest ones first? Is there an order of how you're approaching these, or is it just?
You'd have to ask him. I know the new ones, she's putting in right away and keeping up on those, but then as she has time, she's been working on old ones. I wanna say she said she has like 7,500 old ones to go through yet, so. At the rate she's going, that could take, you know, a good year depending on her other workload.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Laurie.
Bob from Zoning?
Good morning.
Morning, Bob.
On Friday, we did have the vehicle accident in Volga, and once again, the Fire Department and all the local first responders did an excellent job. I got called out mainly because there was diesel spilling out of, out of both vehicles in the long run. And the good thing is, the, the number one thing in an accident like that that we go after is to keep any of the hazardous materials, in this case diesel fuel, from entering the waterway. You got the Big Sioux River literally right, right there, close to it. But from all observations, the way that the Fire Department had set up the booms and soybean plant and their, and their absorbent materials kept everything out of the waterways, and the rest of it hit the gravel road. Sometimes when diesel hits the gravel road, it's best to just let it soak in and, and becomes a dust deterrent so it doesn't contaminate the soil, and so that went well. Saturday, Saturday morning, of course, we had storms roll through and a couple of branches blew by the city of Brookings and everything. But Saturday night, the storms that rolled in, a lot of people may not realize it, but Brookings County sits on the border of the Aberdeen National Weather Service and the Sioux Falls National Weather Service. The National Weather Service in Aberdeen was, was very busy Saturday evening, and we literally had nothing coming out of Sioux Falls. All of a sudden, I turned on this Facebook thing or whatever it was, and a tornado on the ground, a good-sized tornado on the ground up in Clear Lake. So that, that kicked me in the gear, and about 10 o'clock, I came down to the office, turned all my computers on. We do have a computer thing called Slack 2.0 that allows me to contact the National Weather Service through, through text immediately. I contacted them. They said, be aware, Lake Ponton's fixing to get hit with hail. So that started our whole, whole thing. And then no sooner than we got that warning from Aberdeen through Sioux Falls, that I ended up sending out five warnings. One tornado watch, of course, was sent out first, and then we had four severe thunderstorm warnings, one after the other, after the other. And I stayed in the office until 1:00 a.m. just to make sure Brookings County was out of the danger zone. There was some discussion about, well, why wasn't the shelters open and everything? Because the severe stuff was all north of us. The truly severe stuff did not hit Brookings County. Yes, we had tree limbs knocked down here and there, but no warnings sent out by the National Weather Service, which, the, the way we open shelters in Brookings County is typically it takes the first responder or a trained storm spotter, you know, to see rotation and, and see a funnel. Then they start to open the shelters up. So I think the response in the city of Brookings went well. Obviously, we've already said anytime you get anywhere from five to eight inches of rain in a 24 or 48-hour period, you're gonna have water, and that's what we got right now. Looks like it's starting to recede from, from all indications. So we just have to ride it out and, and hope that we don't get a more severe, severe weather pattern until this settles down a little bit. Any questions?
Any question, Bob?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Bob, just wanna say thanks for doing that on a Saturday night.
I did have one more question for Bob if he's, you know, he can answer it from either place, but are we expected to see a lot more flood rising through the Big Sioux Channel with all the northern rain that we've got?
Not at this time. It's starting to level out. I mean, we do have, they did send out the warnings south, south of town and Bruce. They're all getting close to what's flood stage, maybe a couple inches over, but now it's starting to recede. We're starting to get the messages now. We're canceling the flood warnings, so. I think unless we see a major rainfall shortly, I think we'll be all right. Thank you.
Richard, anything? Okay, we have a few minutes here before the scheduled agenda items. I'll move down to item number eight, Action Approve a Resolution Number 25-37. A resolution putting uncollectible mobile homes on the uncollectible list. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Any comments?
This is done yearly to put any of the mobile home taxes that the Sheriff's Office could not collect for us onto an uncollectible list, according to codified law.
Any other questions, comments? Call a roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, Action Approve a Resolution Number 25-38. A resolution removing uncollectible mobile homes from the tax system. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion in a second. Comments?
These mobile home taxes are from what I'm gonna call years ago, and they were uncollectible from the Sheriff's Office due to the fact that they were destroyed. So they're never going to be collected. They are, however, sitting in our tax system and pull up on reports and things like that. So in talking with state auditors and state's attorney, I can ask for permission to get those out of there.
Any questions from board? Call a roll, please.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C is Action to Approve a Resolution Number 25-39. A resolution reissuing distress warrants. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Comments?
These mobile homes have back taxes on them that have gone through the distress warrant process in previous years. They are still sitting there and still being taxed. However, they are delinquent. Codified law does allow me to ask if you would like me to reissue distress warrants for collection, and that is what I would like to do to try to collect on these before another year's added on to them.
Any comments, questions? Call a roll, please.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D, Action Approve Agreement Number 25-53. An agreement by and between Teamsters Local Union Number 120 affiliated with the International Brotherhood of Teamsters and Brookings County Sheriff's Department. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Comments?
This action item as well as the next are the union contracts for the Sheriff's Office, and then the next one on the agenda is with our Highway Department. We have gone through the negotiation process and worked with these groups to get three-year contracts in place starting January 1 of 2026.
Okay. Any other comments? Call a roll, please.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E is Action Approve Agreement Number 25-54. An agreement by and between Teamsters Local Union Number 120 affiliated with the International Brotherhood of Teamsters and Brookings County Highway Department. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Aye.
Have motion in a second. Any comments?
Just the same comments as, as the last contract.
Okay. I guess I would like to thank the staff for all the work they put into this, two contracts here, so. Any other comments?
I, I would like to say the same thing, Stace. I know that's been a challenging time for you and your staff, so thank you for all the work on that.
Yeah, we're happy that we can get three-year contracts in place. It's very nice. We've been able to do that for a number of years, and it just is, it just makes it a lot easier not having to go to that table every single year. Not to say that there aren't times where you sit down and, and look at different things within the contract that may need to be changed mid-contract, but three years is really, really nice, so.
No further comments. You call a roll, please.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F, Action Approve Agreement Number 25-55, a termination of saw. A termination of software and service agreement and reinstatement of maintenance between Brookings County and Tyler Technologies Incorporated. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any further comments?
So due to some security concerns within the Tyler Technologies cloud platform, we are migrating away from what we changed to earlier this year and back to our self-hosted option. This is the cancellation of that cloud agreement and then the beginning of a new self-hosted agreement with a new start date of June 1, 2025.
Okay. Any further comments?
So that has had, we are all self. This is all taking place now already?
It hasn't happened yet, no. We've been waiting for this to get the project started, but the billing commencement date is that June 1 date that they put in there.
Okay.
And the self-hosted is actually cheaper than the, than the cloud. They are crediting us for our prorated amount of the cloud hosted back and there, there will be a bit of a financial impact, but we're still, I'm working on minimizing that.
Call the roll, please.
Post?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Hostler?
Hi.
Vanderwall?
Hi.
Jensen?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay, it is nine o'clock. We have a scheduled agenda item. Second reading, public hearing in action. An ordinance number 25 dash 03. An ordinance authorizing rezoning of a portion of northeast quarter, of northeast quarter of government lots three and four, excluding Lot 1, Block 1 and Lot 1. Block 2 of East Goldsmith subdivision and excluding Block 1 Rose addition and excluding Block 1 Van Cooten Family Farm addition in section 9. Township 110 North, range 51 West of the 5th Primarineum, Brookings County, South Dakota at Volga Township. I looked, can I get a motion and a second to approve this so we can properly discuss
So moved.
Second that motion for discussion purposes.
I have a motion and a second. Now that it is properly before us, Richard, would you read a staff report?
Yes, good morning. This is my staff report written to the commission. 2025 RZ 001, the applicant John Mills and Joy Mills have applied for rezoning request to go from a natural resource district to a lake park district for a seasonal camping spot to be able to put a camper closer to Lake Goldsmith. The applicant owns property at the north and east side of Lake Goldsmith. The rezoning request submitted by the applicant has three size area options that the board could choose to rezone. Option 1 is 175 feet by 300 feet for 1.2 acres in the southwest corner. And option 2 is 2.65 acres in the southwest corner. And option 3 is 8.7 acres, which is a combination of option 1 and option 2 and a portion of agricultural loans and, agricultural loans and land in the southwest quarter of the northeast of the northeast and government lots 3 and 4 except Lot 1, Block 1 and Lot 1, Block 2, East Goldsmith subdivision and except Block 1 Rose addition and except Block 1 Van Cooten Family Farm addition in section 9. Township 110 North, range 51 West of the 5th PM, Brookings County, South Dakota. County development staff allowed the request to go to the planning commission despite the application not specifically, not specifying a legal description to be rezoned. Plating of the property would require Mr. Mills to pay to survey the property. The county development office was attempting to spare Mr. Mills the expense if the request was denied. However, the application not specifying a legal description resulted in two major complications with this request. Number 1, notice was inadvertently published in a manner that does not allow us to rezone option 3, since that option only suggests adding a portion of egg-zoned property to options 2 and 3. And 1, the application, the applicant admitted he was aware that egg-zoned zoning district does not restrict him from using his property how he would like to. The removal of that option should be irrelevant. Number 2, since his request does not specify the legal description to be rezoned, this ordinance is in a form that cannot be approved without at least one amendment. If it is the intent of the member of this commission is to deny the request, the ordinance can be acted on as written. County development staff does not have the authority to change the colors on the zoning map without the elected, elected body specifying exactly where the map needs to be changed and what color it needs to be changed to. Unfortunately, we cannot rezone a legal description to be named later. The figure provided gives us a good idea, but leaves ambiguity, which could result in zoning a wrong property and location. Therefore, the staff recommends, if it is the intent of this member of the commission to approve the request, that a member should first make an amendment to remove the option they do not support. If that amendment passes, a subsequent motion needs to be made to propose the final, postpone the final vote until a plat with a specified piece of property is approved by the county commission. The planning commission voted on the proposed zoning, rezoning options individually. Since the hearing addressed all of them, therefore, the commissioners can act on either one of those requests without the planning commission having to rehear it. However, it will need to wait until a plat of the property to be rezoned prior to the final approval that the plat gets recommendation from the planning commission before you approve it. The history of when the natural resources and comprehensive plan use, plan is stated in my, below in my staff report to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Updates to the Brookings County Comprehensive Plan and the Brookings County zoning ordinance have maintained integrity of the natural resource district. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan of Brookings County on page 54, which is Areas of Development Limitation states, "One of the main factors in implementing the first land use regulations was for the purpose of limiting residential development adjacent to lakes in Brookings County. Unless sanitary districts were established, district development constraints in the unincorporated areas of the county include floodplain, shallow aquifer, soils, and natural resources. This development constraint category has been designated from Natural Resource Conservation Service and the Corps of Engineers Wetland Inventory Studies. The land areas vary from bodies of water to game production areas. Special consideration should be given to preventing development, preventing development to occur unless coordinated precautionary measures are instituted within and near certain rivers, streams, lakes, and abandoned quarries, certain wetlands, natural prairies, and historical sites. Pipes lines as areas develop, pipelines as areas of developmental limitation, developmental constraints in the unincorporated areas of the county on page 58 of the future land use. It is likely that, it is likely that the established development areas of Lake Campbell, Lake Hendricks, Lake Titacah, and Lake Ponton will experience continued development in varying degrees, while non-lakefront growth potential exists for all the above lakes. Significant lakefront area and proposed and appropriately zoned and subdivided in some cases adjacent to Lake Titacah, Lake Campbell, and Lake Hendricks. Despite the small portions of Lake, of Oak Lake and Lake Goldsmith being zoned, Lake Park residential development, it has been and continues to be contradictory to the goals of this and past county land use planning, land use plans dating back to 1972 to allow the expansion of moderate to high-density residential development without the establishment of public, quasi-public sanitary sewer collection systems operated and paid for exclusively by the residents utilizing it. For that reason, any action would be, would remove the zoning designation of the Lake Natural Resource District. For many property already designated is discouraged. The four lakes listed above were developed prior to the establishment of zoning in Brookings County and one in, and are encouraged to establish a sanitary sewer sheet rather than individual septic tanks. However, in full, in full and future residential development may be allowed to continue while utilizing present forms of sanitary systems. After hearing testimony from the proponents, opponents, Volga Township officials, and reviewing the 2016 Comprehensive Land Use Plan, Natural Resources Section and Lake Park zoning ordinance of Brookings County, zoning ordinance as to how the land use would change to a greater density or concentrated use. The Brookings County Planning and Zoning Commission voted on rezoning option number 1, 1 eye and 7 nays. Rezoning option number 2, 0 eyes and 8 nays. Rezoning option number 3, 0 eye, 0 eyes and 8 nays, to recommend denial of all 3 rezoning options requested from natural resources to a lake park district. That concludes my report.
Okay. Now that Richard has read his staff report, do any board members have questions for Richard before I open the public hearing? Any comments or questions? Okay, I'll, I'll open the public hearing. I will first ask for proponents and then ask for opponents. At the end, the applicant will have a chance to address concerns. For timing constraints, would, if you're speaking, could you try to keep it within five minutes? I've now opened the public, public hearing.
Good morning and thank you. I'm John Mills. I'm joined by my wife Joy, who may not talk much, but she wanted to be here and, and show you that we're united in this. I want to start by thanking you for starting your meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I think it just sets a great tone for every meeting and it's good to do. But this morning where I was sitting and where Commissioner Jensen was standing, I couldn't see the flag at all. Fortunately, Commissioner Miller saved the day. So thank you, Commissioner Miller. I really want to start by sharing a story, a little bit of how I got connected with this land and a little bit of some background on this that I think will help you today in your decision. And, and beyond your decision today, I think it may help you as you consider other issues that the county's involved with, because you guys are charged with considering the macro effect on the county as you make your decisions. So if you'll indulge me with, with a story. I have a, a good friend that I've had since high school. His name is Tim Vanderpan. We played football together, so for over 50 years, we've been best of friends. One of those rare friends that very few, we're fortunate if we have one or two of those kind of friends in our life. And that's what Tim is to me. And over the years, he and I have even bought some land together and we're still friends. We still own it and enjoy it. One day back in 2012, I think, we connected on a Saturday. We often do that to do a work project or something on our properties. And he said he was going to an auction, asked if I wanted to go along. I said, okay, where are we going? We ended up at Lake Goldsmith. Two parcels were for sale, a 46 acre parcel that we're talking about today and another 30 acre parcel. And as I sat in the truck with Tim, he said, well, he was really interested in the 46 acre parcel. His family has owned a quarter section west of Volga for decades. And so because of his connection with that land, he'd gotten to know Goldsmith in a way that I never had. And he was really interested in that piece on the north side. It's got a very interesting peninsula on it that was grassed and rocky and he thought it was really cool. As we sat there and talked about it and the auction's underway, I said, well, what about the 30 acre piece? And he said, well, he was, wasn't quite as interested in that. As we went along, I said, well, if you are, if you are have some interest, I'll join you. We'll see if we can buy the 30 acre piece together and you can buy the 46 acre piece by yourself. That's what happened that day. We ended up buying those two pieces of land. I wasn't sure what Tim wanted to do with his. But the first year, I think, he went out there and he planted a few apple trees on that grassed land, put some fences around them, tried to keep the deer away. About a year after that, he came to me one day and he said, hey, my wife and I think we want to build a, a retirement home on that property. And I said, oh, good. You got 46 acres, the county has a 35 acre rule. Yeah, maybe you can do that. If, you know, you've got pretty good odds that you'd be able to do that. And he said, well, I got a bigger challenge. He said, my wife wants neighbors. He said, we want to retire here and we know that having neighbors is a good thing. They help you out when you're gone, they watch your place, they take care of your pets, they might move your snow, you can do it for them. It's nice to have neighbors. And I said, well, if you want neighbors, you're going to have to rezone the whole thing. And he said, you're a developer, I need your help. I said, okay, let's see what we can do. I said, we're going to have to do this right because this has a conservation district easement around it. We're going to have to do it in a way that really honors this lake. And Tim said, you know, I'm okay with that. I mean, he and I, the land that we owned, if you look at it, you would know that we care about conservation. We farm the, the ground that's really excellent for farming and the rest of it, we let it be trees and grass and wildlife and we enjoy that. And so we were okay with doing it in a conservation minded way. We hired, I said, we're going to have to do it right. We hired a landscape architect that I'd worked with and had a lot of respect for. And we worked on, for months on a plan, excellent plan, that devoted over 20% of the land to common use by everybody who would, who would buy a lot in the plan. Trails interconnecting throughout their development so that people could get on a sidewalk and walk through it and enjoy it. About six or eight acres dedicated as a park right down along the lake so that anybody that maybe didn't happen to live on the lake could still get down there and enjoy it. And we even went beyond what county zoning required and, and had planned on covenants and restrictions that would require the septic tanks to be on the roadside of the houses so that there was, they were further away from the lake and that the, the impact on the lake would be even less than law requires. And we even had covenant that would demand that the, a buffer along the lake of, I think, 25 feet would be either native flowers or grass, other than just a little corridor people could have to get down to their beach area so that there would be a buffer and people wouldn't be fertilizing right out into the lake. And we thought of all this stuff. It, we, we, and then we went public with it. We went around, we talked to all the neighbors, anybody we could find. We gave them copies of the plan. I went and met with school board. School board was excited about it. They knew it would increase their tax revenue that they'd have to work with to support the school. It was on the front page of the Volga paper. Came to the planning commission meeting, and I'll try to shorten this up because we got to get to the rest of the story. And a crowd showed up, people against it, neighbors didn't want it, want it. And it was crushed. And my friend's heart was crushed and I was too. I wasn't able to help him. And so we licked our wounds and left. And he lived with that land and, and continued with it for a time. And then back in, I don't know, 2021, he said, I want to sell it. Well, about that same time, Joy and I had sold a piece of land or thinking of selling a piece of land and I was looking for a place to reinvest. I said, well, if you want, I'll buy it from you. I didn't know what I was going to do with it, but I said, I'll buy it. He said, okay. So I hope you've read, you know, what I put in your packet. It tells you a little bit of the story that happened then, you know. In the, and I didn't know what I was going to do with it, but in the course, if you read this, you know that one of the neighbors had encroached on the, on the property and I had to try to figure out how to solve that. Sold the guy 15 feet of property, the same price I'd paid for it. Took a lot of time to get that done. Well, that got done last year. And I thought, okay, I need a fence. The old saying, good fences make good neighbors. That goes both directions. I also know when I go out there, I like to bring my dog and she likes to run and I don't want her running off and bugging the neighbors. So I, I worked to put in a new fence last year. And in the process of putting in that fence, I'm up there a lot with the surveyors, with the fencing contractor, we're putting the fence in. I'm noticing- I'm noticing that, and I see they're here today, the Halins had a camper on their property right down close to the lake. All summer long, that camper was there. And later on, it just kind of dawned on me, you know, that might work for me. If you came to my house today and you drove into my yard, you'd see my camper is parked in my driveway. That's where it sits most of the summer. It's in a shed all winter. Sits there most of the summer, except a couple of weekends, we go out to Palisades or Lewis and Clark or somewhere. And I thought, I could park my camper out here. That'd be great, just like the Halins do. Perfect. But I need a driveway. So, last fall, I had a driveway built, put it back into this property so I could get in there. And this spring, I thought, okay, I, I got to make sure everything's done right. I walked into the county zoning office and I talked with Mr. Haugen, and you can ask him. The first question I asked was, can I put a camper on my property at Goldsmith? And he answered quickly, yes, as long as you stay back three hundred feet. Well, that doesn't work. It doesn't work for anybody who wants to be connected to a lake. It doesn't work for grandma who wants to keep an eye on the grandkids while they're swimming and make sure one of them doesn't drown. You can't be that far back. And so I asked him, I said, well, is there a conditional use permit? Can I ask for that? This is all I want. And he said, no, there isn't. Well, what can I do? Well, you can rezon. That's why we're here today. So, I'll shorten this story, maybe you'll have questions now or later. But I've been a part of a, an effort to do a class development here that I would have been proud of, all of Brookings County would have been proud of, that today, if that had been allowed back in 2012 or fifteen, whenever we, yeah, I think it was fifteen when we brought that. If that had been allowed, there'd be millions of dollars of new investment in Brookings County out there that would be supporting county government and county services. And my friend and his sister and her husband, who retired from Minnesota, would be living out at Lake Goldsmith, and they'd be going to church here, and they'd be making contributions to charities here, and they're not. They're in Sioux Falls. Brookings County lost out a, a lot in that case. That's kind of just for your background knowledge. Today's request is the simplest possible request. Let a man and a woman who own a piece of land that has lakefront property, let them use it like it, that land is meant to be used, as lakefront property for his own family. That's what we're asking for. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
My name is Jacob Mills. John and Joy are my parents. I didn't speak at the planning commission meeting, I wasn't prepared to, and I'll, I'll be brief here. I, I don't own a camper, not interested in joining them out here, I think this is something for them. I do live on a lake, I live on Lake Campbell, so I certainly do understand the draw of water. But what I wanted to say is, I served on the, the Brookings City Planning Commission for about four years. And during that time, I think Kelly might have been on there too. We, we did the joint jurisdiction rework thing, which took like two years because of COVID. And every month, we would meet, we would talk about this joint jurisdiction area. And what I remember about that is, I was darn proud of the guys in the county and how they fought for landowner rights. In the wellhead protection zone, you know, an area where we're concerned about Brookings City water, the county guys were most worried about the landowner that lived there and his rights. His rights to add on to his house, his rights to build a garage on his property, even though he was in the wellhead protection area. You have a landowner who owns more than thirty-five acres, and he's asking you to use his property. I'm going to highlight from a letter in your packet, written by Todd Kays and Luke Mueller. It talks through the history of natural resource zoning, lake park zoning, and then it says, at the end of the letter, "The purpose of the above lake development policies was not to dissuade the incidental residents on thirty-five acres next to a lake." That's what you have before you today. Thank you.
Any other proponents?
Hi, my name's Andy Johnson. John and Joy Mills are my wife's parents, and I am in favor of this, partly just because one of the ways that we've connected with them over the years has been through camping. We've been able to take our campers out, and I would be one of the people that would ideally like to, to utilize this land for camping. I do think that there's a broader picture that Brookings County needs to look at at some point, which is access to these properties. You know, we talk a lot about affordable housing and different areas of housing need. One of them, I do think, as a larger issue, is access to lake properties. We're, we're pretty well sold out. You see that with the hundred and ninety thousand dollar lots on Lake Campbell and other places. So, I think that's a broader issue. In this sense, it's, it's pretty simplified in that there is a lake property, I would like to utilize it for camping with, with my in-laws. There will be people that speak out against it, neighbors that have a desire to maintain a status quo. Some of them are perhaps honoring the letter of the law, but maybe not the spirit of the law, which asks for a three-hundred-foot buffer, but have cleared to the lake to have beach and lawn all the way down there, or park their own campers within that. I respect John for coming and asking permission to do this. We finished our last meeting and walked out, and somebody caught us in the lobby and said, boy, I don't know why you even came, I would have just parked my camper down there and done that. I, I do respect John in, in wanting to come before the commission, follow the proper channels. And I'm hopeful that it's something that, in review, will be allowed to utilize the lake property in the way that it would be. I would be one that would love to be able to take my camper down there, take my family, and utilize the lake. So, I appreciate your consideration in that.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any other proponents? I would now ask, is there any opponents that would like to speak?
I'm Bob Dillon. I live on the west side of the lake, not on the lake, but to the west of it. It's a nice, quiet lake, the way it is. I hate to see it get developed and turned into another Lake Campbell or like any small lake in Minnesota that is totally populated. I'd just like to see it the way it is. Farm ground, nice, quiet neighbors, nice, quiet lake for the kids to come out of town to go fishing on or swimming. I'm just opposed to it. Thank you.
Any other opponents?
Do a picture. Is that possible to put it up?
Yeah. If you can, you can set it on the, and I can put the camera on there. Actually, everybody else. There you go.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Dustin Halins. I'm speaking on behalf of my parents, Bill and Kathy, which are seated behind me. We own a portion of land on the northwest side of Goldsmith. We've owned the property for roughly twenty years. Before owning, we ran the land for fifteen years from an individual that lived on the property. Since owning and renting the property, we have done minimal, I guess, I would say, maintenance to the beach, to the lakefront. Obviously, we picked up branches during storms, as you can see from the picture. We have done some cutting of the trees, dead branches, as we do like to picnic, as we do like to take the kids and the dogs swimming there, just for safety issues. The reason I am providing this picture is the packet that you were, had before the meeting. This picture was taken last Friday, June twenty-seventh, 2025, and as you can see from this picture, there's not a camper on our property. I'm here in front of you to acknowledge that, yes, we did have a camper on the property last summer for a short period of time. That time was between June and late July. As our family, we became aware that we were in violation of setbacks with the zoning, with having a camper on Lake Goldsmith. That camper was removed, the camper has been sold. We do not own a camper in the Halins family as of now. Mr. Mills made a statement in the document submitted to the commission that there was a camper that it usually sits. I just would like to again note that the camper did not sit on our property for more than sixty-five days, and the camper is removed and sold. As a family, we do utilize this property, along with neighbors that loved the Goldsmith area, the natural beauty of it, with being one of the last lakes in Brookings County to be fully not developed. We just ask, ask you to not change any zoning around the lake. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Chris Thompson. I'm the wife of Sheldon Thompson. We live on the south side of the lake, on the south side of the road. I feel when Mr. Mills and Mr. Vanderpan purchased this property, they probably should have done their homework to know the rules and regulations that were in place. And so when they had aspirations of developing and so on, to feel that they are above following those rules or thinking that, well, we can change those rules, is really, it's wrong. And we've all around the lake followed the rules. We have seven grandchildren under the age of ten. We take our chairs down to the water. That's where we watch our children, not from a camper, but from a chair. So, to use that as a reason, mm, sorry, we do it the hard way, just like everyone else around that lake. What will start out as a camper, if you were to approve his request, will soon become a home, would be my guess, which would allow him to have a home within the three hundred feet. The rest of us were not granted that option. So, my, my request, and my husband's, is to stick with the rules, make them stick with the rules. We all had to build three hundred feet back and, and maintain that beautiful lake, which is one of the last out there. So, I hope you consider all of the things going forward that could happen once that zoning gets changed. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Todd Rose. We have land adjoining, the land that is being talked about today. Thank you for the opportunity to talk. We are opposed to the rezoning. It, it is unfortunate that Mr. Mills did not talk with us directly. I think a lot of the neighbors would have at least liked to know about the request and had some discussion, and it's unfortunate now we have to do this all publicly. I submitted a timeline of multiple requests to rezon with each one being denied, including this current one we're talking about today. I also submitted a clipping from the Kingsbury Journal. Mr. Mills was adamant against the exact rezoning that he is applying for now. His representative cited spot zoning and threatened lawsuit if rezoned. Mr. Mills can park the camper and use his land for residential and recreational purposes now. Sorry, recreational, not residential. This discussion is over a setback of three hundred feet. Now, I don't know exact location that he would like to set it, but let's just go with a hundred feet. So, we're talking about a two-hundred-foot distance. It takes the average person forty-four to sixty seconds to walk two hundred feet. I believe this all boils down to personal preference, two hundred feet in distance, forty-four to sixty seconds of walking, and for these reasons, I believe it should be denied and not amended. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sheldon Thompson. My wife was just up here a couple of minutes ago. I live on the south side of the lake, on the south side of the road. I guess I'm somewhat confused. John Mills wants to park his camper there, and that's all that it's about, but in the next sentence, then he indicated how much money the township and the county would stand to make if he were able to develop it the way that he wants to develop it. We're totally opposed to any development over there. We certainly aren't opposed to him parking his camper over there. Like Chris said, we have seven grandchildren that are age ten and under. We walk down to the lake, we take our, our lawn chairs with us. When they have to go to the bathroom, we walk up to the house with them. I walked that distance yesterday. It is approximately four hundred and eighty feet. So, you know, it took me a couple of minutes, and I thought, you know, I think it's about a hundred, it's actually about a hundred and eighty yards, so it's about five hundred and forty. I thought, okay, maybe my steps are a little small. I'm just going to round this down to a hundred and fifty steps, so it's probably four hundred and fifty feet. It took me about two minutes to walk from our, our house down to the lake. And I thought, you know, that ain't even far to walk in. I don't know that little exercise hurt anybody. So, again, we are totally opposed to, to Mr. Mills' proposal, and I appreciate you taking the time to hear us. Thank you.
My name is Lane Bothwell. For somebody that is planning to move my family to the southwest side of the lake, across the road, I do want the Mills family to enjoy the lake, just as we plan to, but by following the zoning rules that are in place, and I oppose it. Thank you.
Any other opponents? Any other opponents? Hearing none, I would now ask, does the applicant have any summary or questions?
Well, thank you for the opportunity to respond just a little bit. You know, I appreciate all the neighbors, and I do understand change is often resisted. I would just address a couple of things. First, there was a comment made that we didn't attempt to talk to anybody, and, and I guess I would refute that. You know, we, we sent out a certified letter to everybody that we had to, it was five people, and I think the county sent to several others. And the one that I sent out, I even gave a copy of it to Richard Haugen back then. He didn't include it in your packet, but I, I told them, people, exactly what we wanted to do, and I listed my cell phone and my wife's cell phone, and I encouraged them to call. That's the easiest way to communicate with people these days without interrupting them. And, and we didn't receive a single call. So, I mean, we did everything we, I think that we should have done. We did everything that we legally had to do, for sure, to try to connect with the neighbors and have a conversation. And I was very clear about what we wanted to do with the property. The issue that was raised about Kingsbury County, that's a totally different issue. And if you want to go down that path, we can talk for an hour, and I can tell you that story. But they're totally unrelated and should be of no, no concern of yours at all today. You know, the confusion, I understand a little bit, maybe the confusion that Mr. Thompson mentioned about, you know, development, but I will tell you today, I have no intention to develop this land beyond the request that I'm asking for today. I am a developer, but I got a lot of places where I can develop where people want it, and that's a lot more fun. I don't enjoy doing it where it's, where nobody wants it. And so, I want to be able to use the land for me, and this is the way it'll work. I can park my camper there, and my daughter and her family can maybe bring theirs out, and we can have our grandkids there for a couple of weekends during the and we can have our grandkids there for a couple of weekends during the summer. And that's really what we want. And I have no intention to develop this land further. But if you deny this request today, and the commission, a different commission obviously, denied the request twelve years ago to do a more broad development, those are the two ends of the spectrum of development that could happen at Goldsmith. If those are both denied, then I would say that's another form of a taking. That property cannot be developed, in other words, for lakefront use. And if that's true, then you ought to just take it and make it into a county park or take it and give it to the state of South Dakota, and they can turn it into a state park. And I'll be fine with that, too. But don't let me own that land and not be able to use it. That's wrong. And so I ask for your favorable consideration today. Thank you.
It appears there's no further testimony. So I'll close the public hearing. The item before us comes with a recommendation for denial from the Planning Commission. Like Richard noted, the request was brought to us in a way that we can either deny the request outright or ask Mr. Mills to have the specific property he wants us to act on surveyed. At that, at this time, is any other discussion from the board or options?
I guess I'll start by stating that because of my business relationship with Mr. Mills, I'll be recusing myself from the vote. But I do have several questions. The first, as far as if Richard could answer or Bob. What is, Mills had stated that there is no way to just get a variance or some option of just parking a camper there temporarily. What, is that something that could be done separately so that it's not a rezoning, but just a conditional use? Explain that process, why there's not that option. Seems like a better fit for this purpose.
Well, it's, it's our natural resource district, which prohibits basically anything within that three hundred feet. There are a couple things I'm going to let Richard quote straight out of the zoning ordinance. One second as we get to that page. All right, permitted uses, someone mentioned the word takings. Natural resource districts, which of course is a three-hundred-foot buffer, permitted uses as wildlife production areas, wildlife habitat, wetlands, planting, pollinator protection area, and vegetated buffer zone, game refuge, historical sites and monuments, designated natural prairies, public hunting and fishing access areas, agricultural uses to include livestock grazing, and scientific observation, survey, or research, such as up at Oak Lake. The permit, uses permitted by conditional use, if deemed not detrimental to the district, would be transportation and utility easements and right of ways, utility substations, public parks and/or playgrounds. And that's all that's allowed as conditional uses or in the body ordinance. And, and what we consider a natural resource district, for your information, it's all lands totally or partially owned by the state or federal governments as wildlife production or public shooting areas, all land unless otherwise zoned within a three hundred feet from original government survey meandering lines of water bodies. And this is where, where Goldsmith falls in. And any other areas specifically zoned natural resources by the county, which we do have it. And the purpose of the natural resource district is provide for the retaining of natural vegetation of a particular area, to preserve the natural environment and resources from destructive land uses, and to protect wildlife habitat. Such an area may include, but is not limited to floodplains of rivers, streams, and lakes, abandoned quarries, certain wetlands, natural prairies, and historical sites. So basically, to answer your question is there is no conditional use permit that would allow a camper to be put there temporarily, so.
Thank you. My next question is, reading through some of the material earlier, this natural resource designation, the three hundred feet around lakes, et cetera, that was put into place primarily because they were having problems originally with development around lakes. So people just run their sewer lines straight into the lake?
Well, I would venture to say it happened before my time in the county. But the majority of our natural resources is around federally owned lands, such as game, the federal Fish and Wildlife Service and Natural Conservation Resource Service. That's, that's, we've got several properties out in the county that are not lakes, but they're still natural resource. And they're owned typically by the federal government or the state. And a lot of these are your walking areas and stuff like that for hunting. As far as the sewer, Brookings County, at least since nineteen, since two thousand and three, when I was in charge of planning and zoning, anytime we see sewage surfacing to the ground, it's an automatic, we contact Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources, and we start, start. It's a violation of all, all nuisances and other things.
That was the impetus of this designation back in seventy-four or two or whatever, was because the houses developing along Ponset were just running pipes straight to the lake. And so something had to be done, and this is what was done in the spur of the moment. And maybe doesn't fit. Are with modern zoning and regulations with building anymore?
Well, I'm, I'm not arguing with you by any means. Lake Ponset, of course, was back in the nineteen twenties is when they started putting the residences on Lake Ponset, so.
Right.
By all means, I, I perfectly agree with your, your statement on that.
Bob, does the three hundred feet have anything to do with the high water mark?
Not the high water mark. It's strictly, back when they did the township and ranges, we're talking eighteen, mid, mid to later eighteen hundreds, when they did the township and range, which of course Brookings County has one mile squares. It's basically, the way the languages talk is about the, the meandering lakes and things like that. And, and basically, three hundred feet from the, from the edge of the, I guess I don't know what the name of it. Yeah, the meandering line that was designated back when they planted the county.
Couple other comments, I guess. Like I mentioned earlier, I have an arrangement to rent the farm ground that surrounds this area and pertains to this. In my opinion, it's a real shame that I'm the, about the only one that gets to drive past there and actually view the lake as I'm going by cut hay or whatever I may do through my agricultural practices. And the next, it's really a beautiful sight. It's a shame more people can't appreciate it. As far as keeping it natural, that's, we've got oak wood in this county that is preserved shoreline all over the place. Lots of counties and communities in this state are struggling with property taxes right now. It is, you know, taking up an awful lot of the energy legislatively and through governor's races going to be focused on it. And we're, even in Volga and throughout the county, we're granting tiffs, encouraging people to come in and do some development and grow some, you know, so we have more tax base to help keep funding the things the government has to do. Just rough figures on my head, and it's entered into part of the record. So the previously denied development, just rough figures in my mind, that's like a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of lost revenue for the Volga School District every year, not to mention township and county. So I'd just like to mention that. And I was elected on what I felt was the biggest issue during our campaign was private property rights. And I was specifically focused to pipelines coming through where, yeah, you had an outside source coming in and taking land. And this is the other end of it, where we're not allowing use of somebody's private land for what they want to do. I wish there was another solution, and like I said, I'm not going to be voting. But I just, more things to consider than, well, I didn't get to, so nobody else can either.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments?
I, Bob and Richard, I'd like some clarity on the way that that's zoned now. I see in, in the packet, there was pictures of, they have boat lifts and docks and different things within that. Is that allowable? The way it's currently zoned?
No, it is not. It is not state. You can have recreational equipment or boat lifts on there. So in my opinion, with this, campers, boat docks would not be allowed in the natural resource area.
And is that, that's the entire lake?
All, all the natural, all the, yes, except for the part that is zoned, lake park already on the east side. Otherwise, the rest of the lake would be, campers and boat docks would be prohibited, according to the ordinance.
So the people that currently live there that have docks and lifts are in violation of what's this zoning?
Yes, they would be. And we do not go out, we're not big brother. We do not go out and look for violations. It's on a volunteer basis, on a complaint-driven basis. If we had received a complaint on that, we have went, went out and investigated it and took the appropriate, appropriate measures for that, what we find, would have found. If we had known there was a camper out there, we would have sent them a letter saying, you need to remove the camper within X amount of days. And if that's not done, the matter would be forwarded to the state's attorney's office for possible action. That is with any complaint received in the county, for no matter what it is, nuisance ordinance or things like that. We would not receive one complaint or anything from Lake Goldsmith in the twenty years that I have been here.
A complicated situation. One follow-up question, Richard or Bob. One of the opponents made a comment that if this was changed, that would rezone, that they would be able to build a house with, in, under that three hundred feet. Is that an accurate statement?
If it is rezoned to lake park, yes. You'd be one hundred, the setback from a lake is one hundred feet then, on the lake park zoning. Seventy-five feet, we just changed ordinance.
Okay.
The setbacks that we're talking, is that, that is, you know, with the seventy-five foot, is that for, is it listed permanent structures, anything like that? Help me, you know, try to figure out if it's permanent structures or if it's, you know, temporary, because I know where there was talk a little earlier when you were talking about the, the area. It can be designated for parks, can be used in that. And I know, you know, with natural resources, parks, mowing and things like that seems to be acceptable. I have a, you know, if somebody parks a camper or something close to the lake, I know one of the pictures had some record, just some add around that chairs that, you know, you go out there and you can enjoy the lake, you can fish, you could throw the ball off.
What's important to realize, and we had this issue back in probably two thousand and fourteen, you are allowed to do agricultural all the way up to the edge of a natural resource zone. You could have a cornfield right up, right up to the edge. You, if you, if you got access to the water, that's what natural resources allow. You can go to the lake and swim in the lake and go back and forth from the lake. But if you build a house, a residence, it has to be at seventy-five feet. And that is, because to build a residence, we have to verify the septic system. And some of that's in, in, not codified law, but it's in the administrative rules of South Dakota that you have to be so far back from a water body to put a septic system in the ground. So as far as cutting grass and, you know, if, if I, obviously putting a camper next to a, to a natural resource is not allowed. But we're not basically taking the property. If you own, if you own ten acres of land, the only thing that we're restricting on that lake, on that natural resource is the three hundred feet. You get a measuring tape, three hundred feet out, you could do anything from the three hundred feet. Put your camper wherever you want on your property, except within that three hundred-foot buffer line.
So you couldn't even put a, a tent in that three hundred foot?
Well, we, we're not big brother. We're not going to go out and, you know, unless game fishing parks tells us, a game warden comes in and says, we're not worried about boy scouts going out and camping on a lake for, for a field trip, in my opinion. But, you know, if you put a fifth world camper in there and you're, and you stay for the summer, and we get a complaint, as Richard stated though, our nuisance and our complaint system in Brookings County, we, we welcome complaints. If you got, if you see a zoning issue and you want to complain, by all means. But we, we do have a, a form that you have to fill out, put down your name and sign the form, and then we take action on it. And we bring any results to the county commission and make a determination. Typically, we send letters out on violations and we rectify, you know, ninety-nine percent of, of any violation of the zoning that I've seen in Brookings County is rectified from us sending a letter out. And then if it's a serious case, we, we take it to the state's attorney and get his opinion on, on how to proceed. And, you know, I, I feel my office, what we are doing is enforcing the zoning ordinance. I, if, if, if something in the zoning ordinance is not correct, bring it to our attention. We, the zoning board, you know, it's a nine-member board appointed by the county commission. And we'd be more than happy to look at anything. But it's a county ordinance, and I have to, have to enforce it fairly. I, we, we can't pick and choose on which areas we enforce and which ones we don't. We have to interpret it as it is and go from there. But it is a living document. It can be changed, so. I don't know if that answered your question or not, but.
Bob, have you ever had any complaints brought forward by the GFMP or the core engineers for issues to address or?
I have not. Well, I mean, we, we've, we've found, they've contacted us every now and then, you know, a fish kill, wanting to know if we knew anything about how fifty dead fish ended up in one area. Did we know where they come from and stuff like that? But no, nothing on the actual lakes themselves, we, we've never had a complaint.
Couple of comments I'd like to share. I believe it was mentioned at the zoning meeting, you know, on the rest of that property, a camper can be placed, just not within three hundred feet. There was three different options. One of them was without, within three hundred feet. I believe Chairman Ford mentioned that, and to John Mills, you realize you can put a camper, you know, in that small area. I forget if it was, what option it was off the top of my head. But there's a lot of space for campers on that property, just not within three hundred feet, is the way the zoning reads today. The second comment I want to make to Jacob had mentioned that I may have been on that joint deal. I was not. I was elected as a county commissioner in twenty-two and started serving in twenty-three. And I attended a few meetings in twenty-two because I wanted to learn and understand what was going on. So I came on the zoning board here in, in twenty-twenty-five. There may have been another member of the Vanderwall family that served on that, but it wasn't me. Happened to be a same last name, so just wanted to clarify that. That's what I have for right now.
Any other comments from the board?
Well, I, I still struggle with the way that this is currently zoned. That, how do we get some clarity on this if we have? I own land, first and foremost, I don't want the government telling me what I can and can't do on my land. But there is a place to keep it consistent. I get that. But for the people that own the land around the lake that are currently using it with docks and lifts that are in violation, how do we clean this up so that we get, so that they can use their land? You can, you live on a lake, you should be able to put a boat lift and a dock on the land that you own so that you can enjoy that? And keep this consistent throughout here? It seems like there needs to be some more research on this. It, it doesn't see, seem to be as clear-cut as just. to be some more research on this. It, it doesn't see, seem to be as clear-cut as just allowing them to put a camper there. There's something, again, that zoning, that people can't put a lift and a dock and use their beach.
By all means, Commissioner, if you, if you would like, we could do research into permitted uses in natural resource areas, and we, we can do some research, nationwide-type research, to see if boat lifts and docks are allowed. Now, I can tell you, a dock in, in South Dakota on any lake has to be approved by Game Fishing Parks. We don't, we do not approve that because they're, the lakes are land of the state. So, if, if they get a dock, basically that's, that's permitted by the state of South Dakota. But we can, we can do some research and see if we can add that to the permitted uses under a natural resource on the, on the docks and the, the lifts. I, I don't know the answer to that right now until I do some research.
Yeah, well, my, my point in that is that it should be consistent for everybody.
Along those lines of consistency, you know, this, this has been in Brookings County zoning since, what, '76 or '72? I think it's important that we don't change the rules at halftime. I mean, if, in a basketball game, you're allowed five fouls per game, you know, we can't change that rule to, okay, we're going to give you six or seven fouls now. I, I don't like the idea of, of changing the rules, you know, at halftime. I, I guess I, I'd like to see consistency as well.
I guess, Kelly, I'd like some clarity on that. I don't understand changing the rules. I mean, I mean, any laws, whether it's been since '70 can be changed, but help me understand the clarity of changing it at halftime.
How do I, can I explain this? You know, the, the other residents around the lake have not been allowed to build closer than 300 feet.
Got it.
And I feel that we're doing a disservice if we change the rules to allow something that wasn't intended. I don't know what the intent of those people were that set this up back in '72 or '76. I mean, I was born in '71. I, I don't know. But, you know, they, some of those were put in for good reason. I think Commissioner Post mentioned, you know, what was the intent as well. But I just, I just feel we can't be changing. We can do more research on this, though, yes. I, I agree with that sentiment, you know. But I just feel like today, we, right now, we, we can't be changing rules.
The 300-foot setback gives me clarity on where you were going with that. Thank you.
Correct. And that's, that's on the land. I think Bob will find when he researches your dock and your boat, that's public waters. And the GFMP, they do enforce the length of docks, there's laws that are gone by, and the GFMP enforces those rules. So, I don't know. You know, to have a boat and a dock in the lake, fine, maybe a shed down there, maybe that's not appropriate. But I think the boat and the dock, any lake you go around, there's boat and docks, and it's public waters, so.
You know, one of the things we need to really consider is, you know, it, as a buyer of, of property and things like that, you have to do your due diligence to find out when you buy property, what you can do, what you can't do, what the setbacks, what all those are, to make that informed decision before you pull the trigger on a very large purchase like that. So, you know, that, that does fall on, on any landowner or, or possible purchase, to do your research, to find out what you can and cannot do. I know, you know, in years past, people, I mean, people are migrating to the, to, you know, rural. I'm, I may not agree with the 35 acres to, to build a, build a house in, on a, on a property, but you look south of Sioux Falls, and every two acres, you have a house. The people that were on this board and the planning before us had some forethought to make sure we keep our agriculture and our, our rural areas in, in Brookings. But we do need to, you know, put it back on the landowner to, to say, you need to research what you have, what you're going to buy, and see if it fits your needs.
Any other discussion? Any, Commissioner, like an amendment or any options brought forward? We call the roll, please.
Miller?
No.
Hostler?
No.
Vanderwall?
No.
Jensen?
No.
Motion fails.
Moving on to item number G, Action Approve Agreement Number 25-56, An Application For Occupancy Of The Rightofway Of County Highway Made By Brookings Dual Rural Water In Sterling.
Commissioner Jensen, we have another public hearing.
Whoops, sorry.
After, if you go back to the nine o'clock. Items B and C, we have to address.
I didn't turn my paper over here, sorry about that. Item B, under Scheduled agenda items, is a public hearing in Action Approve Resolution Number 25-36, a supplemental budget resolution. Do I have motion approved?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. I'll now open a public hearing. Any proponents that would like to speak? Any proponents? Any opponents that would like to speak? Any opponents that would like to speak? Any comments?
This resolution would give us budget authority for both the Samara Avenue construction project. Brian had mentioned that that should be getting here, underway here shortly. The county is going to act as, basically, the, the payer of the bills for that, and we need our, our money, that we do have some saved from general fund, but we want that going, coming out of the Road and Bridge Fund, it just makes more sense, so we have to move that over. And then there was some money as well that was in the highway fund that we want to specifically now get that rebudgeted again for the Samara Avenue project. And then the other piece is the Beta Bus Garage. We have money assigned in both the general fund and the 301 Capital Outlay Fund, Building Fund for that purchase. We just need to give ourselves the budget authority to actually spend those dollars. So, that is the resolution. And then the next action after this, if approved, would also just transfer the, the cash from the general fund to either the 201 or the 301 fund for those same projects.
I'm sorry, I should have closed the public hearing before comments, but any questions as staff? Call the roll, please.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, Action Approve The Following Cash Transfers From General Fund Unassigned Fund Balance To The Road And Bridge Fund 201 In The Amount Of $241,976.50 And Also From General Fund Assigned Beta To The Building Fund 301 In The Amount Of $249,000. Do I motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Any comments? I think it was just explained to us here was Stacy's comments. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, back to regular business. Action Approve Agreement Number 25-56, An Application For Occupancy Of The Rightofway Of County Highway Made By Brookings Dual Rural Water In Sterling Township. Do I have motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Any comments?
Crossing County Road 38.
Okay. Any other questions?
Brian, you don't see any problems with this at all, do you?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Item H, Action Approve Agreement Number 25-57, An Application For Occupancy Of The Rightofway Of County Highways Made By Otter Tail Power Company In Elkton Township. Do I motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Comments?
Crossing County Road 30 Inside The City Limits Of Elkton. I believe that there's going to be a development there.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Item I, Action To Automatically Supplement For Unanticipated Expenses Incurred And Reimbursement Made To Brookings County For Payment Of The Community Development Block Grant For The Brookings Behavioral Health Construction Project In The Amount Of $385,166.42 Receipt Number 00733729 To General Ledger Line 101-4-111-4293. Do I have motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Any comments?
This is the fourth and final payment of the CDBG grant for the Brookings Behavior Health, Behavioral Health, big remodel construction project that they have going on. Once this is supplemented, then we turn around and basically cut a check then to Brookings Behavioral Health so that they continue, can continue to pay their bills for that project. So, this is the first step. At our next meeting here in a couple of weeks, you'll see the claim go through, paying Brookings Behavioral Health in this amount.
Okay. Any questions?
Has there a date been set for a grand opening open house yet, or maybe it's a commissioner?
They're, they're working on that. The date has not been set yet.
They did have a tour last year, kind of mid-construction. It was very interesting, and the place is really taking shape over there, so.
Impressive building. Well done.
No further comments. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Item J, Is Action Approve A Request To Fill Vacancy For An Appraiser In Eagle's Aion Office? Do I motion approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Item K, Action Approve A Request To Fill Vacancy For Full-Time Female Correctional Officer In The Detention Center. Do I have motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Item L, Action Approve A Request To Fill Vacancy For A Full-Time Male Correctional Officer In The Detention Center. Do I motion approve?
So moved. Second.
The motion is second. Any comment? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Item M, Action Approve A Request To Fill Vacancy For An Equipment Operator In The Highway Department. Do I have motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. We now recess as the Board of the County Commissioners. I will declare us in recess. And move on to item number 10. Is convene As The Brookings County Drainage Board? Do I have a motion to convene as the Drainage Board?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are now the Brookings County Drainage Board.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I set a piece of paper on your desk this morning.
Just a second. Bob, I do have the part here, it's the regular business, it's a discussion and possible action regarding the Big Sioux River Diversion Structure In Midary Township. We'll have discussion, and then we'll discuss any motions, so.
Sorry. Go ahead. Yep, the, by state law, we're required to have a meeting twice a year. This is our second meeting of the year to, and we've been doing this project since approximately five years now. And we, we're getting, we're getting to the point where we got an estimate for, to design the project of $25,500. And the, the project cost that they're projecting right now is approximately $200,000. A few years ago, or 2023, two years ago, we, we was moving along, and at that time, they gave us a quote of, I want to say, right around $330,000. So, some of that is because we have already put in approximately $125,000 just in meetings and processing stuff. And we actually had, had a much higher quote. And then Commissioner Jensen worked with NRCS, and, and a lot of that legwork was done on that first, first project that we had, which ended up in a 138-page document. And I guess the biggest thing out of that document is, if we don't do anything, they estimate that it, it's going to cost the county, on one bridge alone, 216th Street Bridge, they estimate from 2.7 to 3.3 million dollars, and that's for one bridge. 217th Street Culverts, that's another 850,000 to 1, 1 million dollars. And then you've got a 469th Street County Road Bridge Number 19, 2.7 to 3.3 million, or approximately 6.25 million to 7.65 million of damage to our, our county infrastructure if we don't get this under control on this Midary Township. So, I guess today, what our, our quote is, we had budget hearings already, and obviously I got some money left in the budget for this year. I'm thinking the 25,000 I probably still have in the budget for this year to cover the, the start to design cost. I do not have $200,000 in next year's budget if we, if we start rolling along. And I guess as a drainage officer, I need guidance on how would you like me to proceed?
I guess, Bob, a couple of new mem, maybe update, kind of what the structure, the flows and what's taken place over the last few years. We kind of got stalled out, there was some change in staffing at the state level.
Can you turn the camera on? I don't know if this will show up or not, this is a small image.
At the state level.
Yeah. Yeah, see if you can zoom in. Yep, right there, that one right there. Okay, what this is, this is the, we call it the Sinai Road, and you got the Big Sioux River, you cross the Big Sioux River, and if you go, I don't know if anyone's familiar with...
Ralph Berndt.
I forgot the guy's name.
Ralph Berndt.
Yep, Ralph Brehens Place. But his house is right over here. Well, right there is where Ralph Brehens' house is. This is the Big Sioux River, and it used to come down here and come down through here, where years ago, a farmer here wanted, wanted to water some land somewhere, or he owned land down this strip. So, he opened up a little waterway, and he used to plug it every year with a hay bale. And over the years, you can see how large it is now. It's an extremely large area. Well, from the hay bale size, once he passed away, no one was maintaining it. And then all of a sudden, now you've got, the, the last study we had, probably four years ago, showed you actually had more water at one time running down the bypass than you did the main Big Sioux River. So, and a lot of, a lot of land was, was losing production down south. So, landowners came to the county and requested that... and requested that we, we see if we can't plug that, that dike per se, and historically, you can almost see it right through here, and then it actually continues on down in, down in here. There was, back in the fifties, there was a farmer that, that tried to direct the flow of the Big Sioux River apparently, and as you can see, it didn't work. So we started studying this, commissioners in, in the past, and now we're to the point where a dirt berm, constructed berm, they feel could constrain the water within, within the Big Sioux actual boundary, and it would dry up most of the land to the, to the west and allow that land to go back to farmland, and right now, the cost, additional cost, it looks like it's about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
And we have spent?
Yeah, we've already spent over a hundred and twenty thousand into it. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but.
Correct.
It's in the long-range plan numbers that we submitted.
Is there any concerns that redirecting that water back into its natural channel is going to cause, I mean, is that bank in there going to be able to handle that flow? Does it need to be cleaned out or to make sure that it doesn't?
We specifically asked the engineer about Ralph Berndt's house, since it's right there, and he said that there, his professional opinion, and he's a, he's a professional engineer, so I have, by state law, you have to, have to weigh that with its, with its importance. He doesn't feel that there'd be any, any danger to that residence, because that was the, one of the first questions that came up from literally everybody.
But the next place to the east, Lesnar, I believe it is, is that?
Yeah, that one, they didn't mention any, any danger on that one. Here you can see you actually, the Big Sioux River actually runs down this way now, and, or, but then this is what the diversion would look like. We'd put the river back into this channel here.
The, Brian, the, the bridge was replaced on County Road Twelve numerous years ago. What was the additional length added to the bridge for?
It was roughly about fifty feet, and the additional length that was added onto that bridge was a new federal requirement for scour, and if that bridge was replaced in its original spot, it was more susceptible to the scour. That's why the additional length was added because of those scour requirements.
Yeah. And that brings up a good point.
Raise that bridge, too.
Correct.
About three, four foot at least higher than it was?
It's about four feet.
If you follow this, the new, what we call the bypass stream down to the county road, you can see that, that is scouring more than, than it's ever been in the past. So that's going to require that to be replaced sooner or later if we don't, if we don't do something.
Yeah, that western channel that's.
Yep.
Because it's, it's pushing up on that bridge right now, I think.
Yeah, and that's, we, we finally got to a point here where hopefully we can move forward and, and get the construction done. Now we got water, but it's been nice to have it done a few years ago, but.
Month ago, you could have got in there real easy.
And, and the design of this structure is at high water time. Now when it's flooding, it's not going to make any difference. It's at, it's when the river's at its, you know, middle of summer, no flooding, taking, it'll, it'll maintain that water in the river. There will be a culvert. I can't remember the exact diameter of the culvert in the structure. It'll maintain that little bit of water to them landowners or the cattle, so.
And it's been vetted by the NRCS up to the national level in Washington, D.C., and, you know, we're to the point now where if we're going to move as a county commissioner and drainage board, we need to move. You're not going to get it any cheaper. Already the price came down, you know, about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from what I can determine, and.
And some of the reasons that it did come down was because staff changes, and they didn't realize what one office was going to require them for, for studies, and the studies.
Environmental impact studies and stuff like that.
Environmental impact wasn't as extensive as originally thought, so that's why the price reduction.
And the biggest price reduction, which is probably millions of dollars, is we do not have to replace wetland with wetland.
Right.
That was the, that was the sticking point for, for a couple of years, that they kept saying, well, you're going to have to swap wetland for wetland, and, and that's been taken out of the equation, but once, once new staff came on at NRCS and realized what we was looking at.
If we were to move forward with this project, would we need to budget this for next year?
I would think so. I'm not a, I'm not the budget guru, and I'd have to talk to banners, but I'm thinking I'd have to look at my budget to see, make sure I got the twenty-five-five to finish up the engineering stuff this year and be ready to roll.
Okay.
There, there's no preliminary what the structure would look like as far as materials and?
That is at twenty-five-five that they're asking for.
Right, but we don't know whether they're filling it with rock or clay or dirt or concrete or.
Yeah, it, there's, it'd be.
It'd be engineered.
Classified contractor fill. I'm sure it would be with riprap on it. You don't keep it from eroding.
I mean, I'm sure it's going to be a combination clay, whatever the engineers.
We did have a preliminary drawing.
Yeah, but.
Three, four years ago, but they'll have to redo.
But they changed distances and everything since then, so.
Yeah.
But I would assume scheduling a project like this is, I mean, you almost got to wait for another low season and then.
Oh, by, by all means, yeah.
Bust it and get it done. It's just access to that area is going to be difficult to get.
But I, I feel we need to start the, the engineering, designing phase of it, and then even possibly do the RFP for the, for the thing, and then when the time is right at, so they can come in and move, but.
It's not something you want to drag out for a year and a half because it'll wash away three times.
Yes, I.
Before it's done.
Yeah, it's actually, if you would, we, we visited the site a couple of times. If you actually go out there and visit the site, it's, it's a lot smaller than you envision on the picture here.
Yeah, I've put a hay all around it.
So, but I guess, discussion, I guess I'd look for a motion to move forward with the, with the project.
I'll make a motion to approve staff to continue this process as Bob has presented it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And one, one thing, Commissioner, if I may, we are, I am going to, I'll, I'll reply back to banners this way and get it started, but we, I want to get with banners and start that process with the landowner who owns the land and get that in writing, because right now, that's, that's never been put in writing, but we, that needs to be in, in place.
Correct.
For us to do anything else.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. Anything, oh, anything else?
I entertain a motion to adjourn as the County Drainage Board.
So moved.
Second.
And motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
We'll reconvene as Board of the County Commissioners. We're back in session, and we would move on to Commission Department Director's report.
Couple of things that came up over the weekend that I want to kind of draw your, or bring you to your attention. I think I had sent out an email yesterday. We had a few power outages here at the building, kind of in short sequential order, they, they came. They, it was determined that it was caused by a failure of one of the chillers that we have. That's with our HVAC unit. Unfortunately, the, the generator didn't kick on because it was an internal outage, blew internal breakers. If we were to experience a power outage, like a citywide power outage, the generator would kick on and we'd be back in business, but because this was internal, that, that transfer switch doesn't recognize that as the power, so it was very short-lived. I mean, the first one was maybe a couple of, a couple of minutes, and then there was a couple other quick ones that were less than a minute probably, so, but just some things we were dealing with. So Jared Thomas is the, the chief building official for the city of Brookings, and he had sent out some information a little bit later yesterday, basically saying that, you know, that we have three chillers in the basement. They're tandem chillers, meaning there's an upper and lower unit in each chiller for a total of six. Previously, the upper unit in chiller two was dead, and the replacement of that chiller was ballparked at about twenty thousand. That's high. That's a high cost because our HVAC system is, is aging, and there are no available replacements, but there are similar ones that can be modified with a lot of labor costs. And then after he looked into it, things yesterday, the upper unit in chiller three and the lower unit in chiller one are also out of commission, so basically we're operating at fifty percent right now of our maximum capacity. It's holding. Johnson Controls did come yesterday to take a look at things. We've tasked them to come up with a backup plan in, in the event that we lose another chiller. They've also given Jared kind of a high-level plan of what they want to propose for replacements of the tandem chillers. That plan, sort of a longer-term plan that would hopefully address some of our heating and cooling issues that we have with this building, that we've kind of always had with this building. Asking, he's asked for, Jared has asked for some numbers, waiting for those yet back from Johnson Controls, but we're looking at a pretty big expenditure, you know, five hundred thousand or more possibly with this, with this expense, but hopefully we'll have some more information in the coming days, but I wanted you to be aware that that is what, since I'd kind of given you a brief update yesterday, that that's kind of where we're at right now, and as I, I learn more, I will make sure to share that with you. Also, over the weekend, we had some damage on our roof during the storms, and I can put up some pictures. I think that's me. So we had the roof par, part of the roof parapet came down. This one probably shows it better, right there. That piece came down, and then it was, actually, you can see it was kind of scratching the building. Actually, Michelle, our office manager, was here and was kind of on top of things over the weekend and, and looking at it. So, yeah, there's some other pictures of where it came down. You can see where it's missing there, scratch on the wall. Again, Jared Thomas with the city has, has gotten a hold of a roofer, and we're looking into fixing that issue as well. So that was just due to the, some of the wind damage that we experienced with the, the passing weather over the weekend. Other than that, just the upcoming dates, offices are closed on Friday this week for the Fourth of July holiday. Next week, we will be having Safety Week here at the Government Center. The biggest part of that is the, the picnic on Thursday, and I think I've heard from those of you that will be attending that. Tuesday next week, Tuesday evening at five-thirty, we do have that joint county commission, city council meeting here in the chambers at five-thirty. There's a, a different rezoning issue that the joint boards of adjustment are going to be dealing with, I believe, tonight, and then that gets passed on to the joint city council, county commission, and that will be on July eighth. Achievement Day is, we've kind of talked about that, and the thing to note that makes sure is on your calendar is the barbecue, the four-H barbecue on the thirty-first. And then just a little bit further out into August, probably the new add to this is the Sioux Valley Commissioners or the Ten County Meeting Wednesday, August thirteenth. I don't have an agenda yet. I would anticipate that we would get one here in the next couple of weeks. It's in Clark County. I'm not sure where they usually have that up in Clark County. I can't remember offhand, but we'll find out, and, and I will share that with you when that information gets passed along. Other than that, that's all I have unless you guys have any questions for me. Yes, Kelly?
Has a road tour date been set between Brian and you?
That's usually in October.
Okay.
So no, right? It's usually in the fall, road tour?
Yeah, we try to get the brunt of our projects done before we go on tour.
Yeah. One other thing, I guess, that did also get added to your calendar of events, Wednesday, July ninth, next week, the White Fire Department, for the first time in many, many years, is having a county feed at five. It starts at five-thirty. It's at their new fire hall in White, so Wednesday, July ninth, five-thirty P.M. That was a new, new add since the agenda was released as well, so that's all I have.
State's Attorney's Office report. Commissioner reports. Commissioner Vanderwal.
I got it written down somewhere here. We got a lot of notes today going on, guys. Okay, I'm going to wing it. On the nineteenth of June, I was here with all of you for the budget hearings, and then on the, oh, come on here. Oh, on Saturday, the twenty-first, I attended the Republican meeting here in Brookings, that one, and then, oh, on Saturday, the twenty-eighth, I attended the Beta Open House here in Brookings. Very neat facility. I was glad we had an opportunity to do that. They had, on the back of each bus, you know, how many rides were given by that bus, what their initial purchase cost was, and then it, on the, how much expense has been incurred by that bus. Very, very eye-opening, and I'm glad I had an opportunity to see that new facility, or new to them facility.
Commissioner Post.
Thank you. Yeah, I also attended the budget meetings and the Republican meeting on that Saturday morning, so that was all I had for this session.
Commissioner Miller.
All right, thank you. On the nineteenth, again, the budget hearings. On the twenty-fifth, I attended the Beta Board meeting, and I agree with you, Kelly, it's impressive when you look at the numbers of rides that go through there. It's, I didn't realize how busy they are and how many vehicles they have, so. And then last night, the thirtieth, I had the hospital board meeting.
Commissioner Hostler.
Yeah, so on the eighteenth of June, we had a meeting over at the courthouse, addressed some of their needs and some updates on that. Also, on the eighteenth, we had the BEDC Board meeting. On the nineteenth, I was here for county budget hearings. The twenty-first, I as well attended the Brookings County Republican meeting at the OAC. Twenty-first, twenty-fourth, we had our Research Park Board meeting. The twenty-sixth, we had our Domestic Abuse Shelter Board meeting. On the twenty-seventh, last Friday, we had our final merger committee board meeting. It, the decisions have gone to the four local boards to determine whether they want to move forward and dive deeper into the merger, so that task is now being shifted to a new, newly- So, that task is now being shifted to a new, newly-formed board for that continued growth and, and, yeah, that is my report.
Okay, on 19th, I attended the budget hearings. On the 25th, I, I attended the Advantage Land Appreciation Dinner for local officials and emergency people and it was one of the best sandwiches they had in a long time. Also, later on, I, Samara Avenue, pre-con, pre-con meeting that day. Hopefully can get moving on that next week if it dries up a little bit, but like, excited to see that get started. On the 28th, I also went to the Beta Open House. I know the employees are excited about the new facility. Nice to have the buses inside and, and warm and I was actually impressed with what Commissioner Vanderwal brought forward with all the stats on the back of the buses and the amount of new buses that were in the facility. I then stopped out, I ran into a person that morning and invited me out to the local, I don't know what you call a ham radio or radio group out at the gun club. And I stopped out there and kind of seen what them guys were doing. By having an elected official stop, I got them guys 100 extra points, so it was kind of interesting. And last night, I went up to Toronto. I've been involved with the local review committee up there for a generation plant that's proposed just northeast of Toronto. There was a change from seven to eight engines in this generation plant, down to four engines and they had to change that in the, in the paperwork going to the Public Utilities Commission. That's what we acted on last night. With that, that concludes my report and I move on to item number 17. Executive Session, in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2, parentheses, one, personnel. Do I have a motion to enter?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign, we're in executive session.